Board of Adjustments for the City of Elizabeth with thousand order. This meeting is the zoning board adjustment of the City of Elizabeth in need this Thursday, 8th April, 2012, as included in the orders and provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act as a regular meeting. Notice of said meeting to publish the district letter on January 1st, September 2012, and notice of the cases being heard or also published in the district letter at least ten days before today. Madam Secretary. Paul Paul.
Commissioner Prado?
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Castro?
Here.
Commissioner Silva?
Here.
Commissioner Eme? Reverend Dixon? Commissioner Connell?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Vettelis? Chairman Niz?
Here.
Well, I would like one huge round of applause to the ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. What do you think, Adam, that you said that you were not going to be able to? Uh, the record is 136, 314. 374, 495. Board would like to recall, Commissioner Gutierrez. So, for some resolutions, so quick, uh, resolution to their motion for Resolution Z 26-06, 332, 319, West Jersey Street, West Jersey Street, Holy, Allen Lane. May I have one? Move by Commissioner Castro, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castro. Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Prado?
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Castro?
Outstanding.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
Listening.
Commissioner Connell?
Aye.
Commissioner Vettelis?
Aye.
Chairman Niz?
Aye.
Board would like to recognize Commissioner Dixon. Next resolution, uh, is there motion for Resolution Z 20-12, 1012, Center Street, Elizabeth, Fifth and Club?
Promote.
Motion by Commissioner Castro, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Gutierrez. Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Connell?
Aye.
Chairman Niz?
Aye.
Is somebody closest to our back there? Resolution Z 08-12, 721 Adams Avenue, will say Fito. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Motion by Commissioner Castro, if I have a second. Second by Commissioner Gonzalez, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Prado?
Outstanding.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Connell?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Chairman Niz?
Aye.
Resolution Z 11-12, 45, 47, 51, Cherry Street, Community Access Unlimited.
Promote.
Motion by Commissioner Castro, if I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gonzalez, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Reverend Dixon?
Aye.
Commissioner Connell?
Aye.
Commissioner Vettelis?
Aye.
Chairman Niz?
Aye.
Resolution Z 22-12, 158, 168, First Street, Housing Authority of the City of Elizabeth. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Motion by Commissioner Castro, if I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castro. Madam Allison. Commissioner Hen. Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Connell?
Aye.
Reverend Dixon?
Aye.
Chairman Niz?
Aye.
Uh, is there a motion to approve or deny the minutes of the regular meeting?
Promote.
Who's motion by Commissioner Castro, is there a second?
Second by Commissioner Gonzalez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none? First order of the day would be Application Z 53-5, amended application for 715, 733, Pennsylvania Avenue, 10th Ave, Allen Lane.
Needing to hear your board from Stephen Hill, who is on behalf of Penn and Allen Lane. Uh, we were here at this meeting, which we didn't have time to run into the seat, but we do appreciate the board's appearance to this evening. It would also give us an opportunity to revise the plans, to submit amendments to the plans that address some of the comments of our consultants, more specifically, like any frame mentioned, our professionals will address that. And I think there's a request for some additional managements, so the agenda was put to, uh, to put to good use. This is an exciting project for the City of Elizabeth. We're looking to take it under your light sight and construct a new, uh, new project of six stories and 100 residential units. Uh, I think this is going to be something that's, uh, you'll hear from the test line that will attract people to then make use of transit and commute to, uh, other areas, New York, and then revitalizing sections of the city of Elizabeth. This project was previously moved by this board in the year 2005, uh, as a 100 residential unit, nine-story building. And again, as I said, now it's close to having a six-story building and, uh, with some retail space. We, uh, we do have various associated with the application, so using it to record this board, but we will have a test line to address and justify all those appearances. Uh, and, uh, this is what we're going to be testing in the nature of the transit building type, uh, project. And I think we'll be impressed by both what's being designed and in any sense that we provide as part of the project. So, uh, and they're also going to be interested in their testing regarding the, uh, the architecture will be utilized by the residents, uh, for the open space criteria. So, uh, if there's any further questions, uh, I'd like to hold on person to the bank call. You both just always with a testimony or a presentation. This is Grace Anthony.
Andy Alar, good morning. Moyle, you're in.
Sarah State, your name, can you tell your name and give your?
Frank G O L O M, 300, Penn and, and Dora Project.
Mr. Golden, if you could briefly describe your background and association with Penn and.
Uh, it's up on the portrait, uh, and we'll see, uh, my background.
I barely am here when you're using the microphone. I bet you that can over here, the whole of both of you.
Okay, sorry. Uh, Andy Horace, representative for Penn and Allen Lane. Uh, my background is, um, developing, uh, some of the, uh, couple developers, maybe only for about 25 years, and, uh, I'm representing, uh, developer that will be building Penn and, uh, Pennsylvania project for the Horace. Uh, my background is in, uh, graduate engineering, uh, with a master's in engineering and completing a doctorate degree, again, in engineering, also have a master's in business. Uh, the, uh, and of course, I've developed, uh, both large residential, uh, solo families, multi-stories, uh, both New York and Jersey, uh, whether the seven-storys, uh, ten-storys or single-family structures.
And the project, if I all deal with what has happened off the end of the plans, but could you describe briefly for other projects that you've done, some similar to this project, and then touch upon those type of venues and what you want to apply?
The, the owners have developed, uh, in Newark for the past number of years, several projects where we have, um, art buildings, uh, on top of, let's say, school or structure parking, both, uh, and, uh, what I have is, as opposed to, uh, going and describing what's, uh, as time and similar, I did put together a quick presentation of just some of the projects in South Street, uh, South Street over in Newark, uh, that was completed in 2010, and it's now actively renting, uh, the school, there's four apartments, almost way similar to, uh, Pennsylvania. So if you don't have a lot of experience with Elizabeth, if you wanted to just try to show a little bit of the background of some of the development that I've done by the owner myself, if you don't mind, I have, okay, as I was about to say, many, if that's okay.
I mean, if only we made it as brief as possible. I mean, I'm pretty sure the board is, is satisfied with your ability to be able to develop this type of project, but please, please like us.
And we also have to show the Penn and, uh, some, so just to see how, how the camera is.
Walk and talk.
Okay. Okay, so this is, uh, one of our applications up there. I wanted to, to show you the construction in Newark of South School. And just a quick video showing when we started in February 2010, uh, and what was required was that we had to open the school by September 1st, and as you can see, we started demolition, uh, early February. Uh, can everybody see okay there? I know this order was a little tight. Foundation started in March excavation of the foundation. Uh, by April, we started to pour concrete. It was a, it was an expedited project, uh, requiring us to open the school, so we had to as quickly as possible, uh, some of the owners of, uh, Penn and, uh, building and construction in Pennsylvania, so concrete, wood, steel, wood frame. And you can see, this is the core of the school roof after the May. We started putting the concrete to, to, uh, for, for the roof. On top of this is what's called the transfer slant, and we started to build, uh, right after that, the frame for the, the apartments.
Mrs. Chairman, I want to be rude, but what those six houses do with this application is wish me fine, and I forgot to wrap these here.
Do you want me to, uh, that's more? Shit. The only reason why I wanted to show you is just to, uh, demonstrate that, uh, we have the ability to build a project similar to this, and I just wanted to show you a little bit of the existing project now, if, if, if you'd like me to stop, I can do that. I just wanted to show you what we have built, what the owners maintain now as apartments and schools, to show you this is the type of construction, finishes, and product that we would be doing in Elizabeth. You can see this is the lobby of what you just saw the construction going on. Security room, supply of security, fourth building, mailroom, of course, apartment access to the elevators. The owners maintain and operate the building themselves. Structure parking. These are the common hallways where the apartments above. You can see the finishes, and these are typical finishes that are utilized in all other buildings. Common laundry rooms that are supplied on each floor over the tents. These are the interior finishes. Hardwood floors, tile, trim, high efficiency windows. Raised panel, uh, cabinets, tile floors, finishes in the back.
I did, uh, that the, uh, the board is satisfied with your, uh, ability to be able to do that.
Mr. Golden, also heard from the introduction, and, uh, this is a change we filed previously approved in 2005. The professionals have briefly, briefly provided, uh, overview of, and why this change?
Uh, originally, uh, originally, the project was designed as a ten-stores, uh, for sale high-end condominium. Uh, the market right now, and also the financial condition of the usual lending, will, uh, it just can't bear, uh, for sale by any kind of things. Apartments are, um, you know, very active right now. We have the ability to build, uh, the apartments and, and still keep the same quality that we would done with the condominiums. Certainly, uh, banks and financial people we had will not finance condominiums for still coming to this day, so we wouldn't be able to get financing to build it.
Now, this project with its location, where would you intend to advertise for clientele and do you expect to be the clientele?
We anticipate, because of the proximity to Elizabeth, the front stock, uh, and from what I know, the Jersey Transit is about 460 or so, uh, riders that use that, that stock right now. So we anticipate that, uh, possibly Manhattan, you would be advertising there for people that commute, uh, to the city, uh, Hoboken, Jersey City, uh, we will try and draw some of the apartments specifically comparative prices, uh, of Jersey City, Hoboken, which was the target. So we anticipate that would be some of the areas to draw, and of course, Elizabeth and some areas locally, similar to Penn and, so.
And I'd also mention that there's a terrace entity.
Yes.
Who designs the original project, we have the top, uh, for.
I think originally, it was the rooftop suggested that, I think, was removed after, and then, uh, they replaced that with, I think, the swimming pool, that's, and the exercise. What we did was, uh, we left, we formed a U shape around, left the center, uh, transfer slant, center of the area, terrace that we planned on putting payers, landscaping, some of the, the, that, particularly the residents utilized as going out, getting out there, some of the landscaping they had, being the outdoor parties and eat, and have, uh, different type of activities there on the outside. Which are, uh, over the, the, uh, street, uh, that outside, uh, we anticipate, uh, working to, for, uh, making, plus, there is going to stay, see how, uh, the outside.
I'm sorry to anticipate.
Uh, there was coming outside and utilizing the outside terrace for, I guess, for entertainment or, uh, uh, you know, reading.
And we know that this now feeds a retail component, it's placed in contact with, uh...
One of the, one of the reasons that again, we're, because of the, uh, because of the light and train stock, we anticipate that the, uh, few, we're going to get into a few of the projects that we have to have until space in the parking structure, pushing the parking structure, that people will come in coffee, for their sandwich, you know, meals, and maintain and keep that and sell instead of shopping. And they want to really swallow that, you know, and participate, that people in the morning stop there, get coffee, sandwich, something like that, before they go to drink. Our own, um, tent, we come down right now, they run from six to, uh, seven and five, six to seven and five in the other area, and then, you know, we really feel for us to come to them, although I thought we were anticipating for, uh, I guess, the, the.
I know you're excited about coming to the city, but, uh, is that a reason that you expect, uh, to do with your city and your board?
Well, what we're hoping that this is just, uh, our own project, we, uh, we did developing it in Newark for other needs, and they want to expand, and also, uh, want to build a nice project, uh, in Elizabeth, and hopefully, hopefully, simply, please, what they say, I will, I will deal with the customers, and hopefully, we'll have many more returns here, as you can see, the entire, and, uh, the, the, and, uh, hopefully, if you're, uh, I don't think we're lucky right now.
And you've had opportunity to contribute to the department of the commonest, and I gave also my opinion that, uh, there were some requests for, uh, some additional landscaping, some lighting plan, framing plan, and professionals address that part.
That's correct, whatever was called, uh, we, we ask the professionals to just do what they have, uh, require, uh, my, uh, my attention, and, uh, we'll issue.
Thank you. I have another question for this time.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Sir, I did with this project since 2005, I'm a little...
Um, uh, we, I, I was involved with the project when the prior, um, owner, there was, there was a company that was trying to buy this previously from, um, the NEM, and I was involved at the former part, and I had stayed in contact with, sorry.
Can I have?
I had kept in contact with the owners of the NEM, and they approached me, I guess, two years ago, well, I brought the information to the owners, to the owners' presidents, and they negotiated and have, uh, our contract, of course.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions, any questions?
I have, actually, I have a question for Mr. Galariva. I remember this application very, uh, what is your opinion, Mr. Galariva, as to the difference between this application and the previous application, besides the number of units that now this new application is proposing?
Um, there's a real difference in the application, um, of single units, uh, to scale down, I can scale down, um, there's one less level of parking, um, harder bearings and so forth, we really will have those differences, so, uh, except for we're using swing to scale down in size, uh, including the five levels difference between the application and the last one.
So this is in essence, a scaled-down application compared to the one that we booked in 2005?
It's scaled down really in size, as far as units, um, still a hundred units, uh, these condensed areas are less stories, uh, totally, uh, small, uh, the parking has been, uh, used to two levels, so, um, of course, that stays about the same, uh, as far as the scale of projects, parts of physical size, uh, something would have moved to scale down.
Then, especially with the, I, I will probably, uh, and, did you feel that this new application is probably squeezing this amount of units? If there's more space, maybe, you know, like?
It's a different type of unit, I think, when the architect comes out, the problem will act a little bit more of a difference from units, but, um, it's a different mix of, of units and unit sizes, so I don't necessarily squeeze in the same amount in less area, I think it's a different, different type of units that we proposed, and, um, you know, I think the architect will probably elaborate, I wonder when it will be more when it comes out.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other question?
Thank you, Senator, on our site, Mr. Thomas Quinn.
So, do you have any visual? I have, um, Senator Lloyd, please. Lady Ryan, you may, Solomon Square, the testimony here, this evening was with the truth, also, and nothing of the truth. Thank you, Dr. Man, give your address.
Sure, it's a constant rule, uh, this is address 228, quite clearly, it's not.
This is Quinn, uh, if you testified for this board on numerous occasions, the board as well. That's great, thank you, and I can hear this one, this, uh, if you could, uh, remind the board with an overview of the, of the site plan, and, uh, also touch upon divisions that were also recently made responsibility, let her, uh, Tony Alar.
Sure. Um, well, for the right of what we're talking about is, uh, project 404. I'm talking about four existing clauses known as tax lots, 11A, known as tax lots, 11-1247, 11-1247A, 11-1248, and 11-1248A. These four clauses comprise 3400, that's our 3800, uh, square feet, 3000 square feet, to about 0.88 acres.
You got that number the best.
Yeah, 38,000, 340 square feet, or 0.88. Um, Marcella is located in C4 zone. It's found in, uh, the, the plan, to the northwest by Pennsylvania Avenue, to the southwest by Handways, to the southeast by Pennsylvania Railroad Action, and there's a train, train station, uh, behind, uh, and to northeast by, this is a commercial use. Currently, the site contains two single-story basement buildings, they total about 12,000 square feet. Um, there is a large parking lot that, uh, joins the two buildings, there's a small wooded area, uh, to the rear of the property, basically Pennsylvania Railroad. Currently, the total permi service of the site is about 29,002 square feet, or about 76%. The existing grade is such that the height of the site is located at the intersection of Pennsylvania and Penn, and the property falls away towards the south and east. Uh, it's about seven-foot grade difference between the high spot and the northwest and the low spot and southwest. Um, but obviously, all of the existing features are to be demolished in favor of the proposed development. The proposed development is highlighted by the...
Commissions, any questions?
Seeing that all the board has changed where.
Could you solemnly swear the testimony you're giving in this matter with the true ownership of the property?
Yes, I do.
And then add this to the record?
James R. Greer, by the name of Jefferson Henry Elizabeth.
Obviously, boy will accept this for his permission.
Thank you.
Thank you. For your testimony, so far, seeing if you could amplify the word with over two of the elevations and the interior layout.
Okay, as you testified to me earlier, it's two levels of parking, one level is below grade, one level is at grade for Pennsylvania Avenue, and then there's five residential floors above that. Each of those floors contains twenty apartments bearing from one bedroom which two bedrooms and one free bedroom. So there's twenty units per floor times five floors, so there's a hundred units. The two parking decks contain on-site hundred thirty-five cars. And another point I would like to make here, the original proposal a number of years ago had a hundred and twenty-one cars. So we substantially increased the parking onsite from one point one to one thirty-five. The material, now what happens on the roof of the second level of parking, there's a large open space, it's about over nine thousand square feet of open space there. That will be developed as an attack area for all tenants to access the payers, the receiving, the low-level lighting, landscaping. So that's, and then the building racks are ready, that's kind of the building's supposed to look like a horseshoe. That's facing like towards the tracks. And we feel that this type of open space will be used, I suppose, if that address or this whole hill facing the tracks. Here everyone can access this.
And that is your exhibit?
That seems to, I don't know what it was, eight-two. Eight, yes, eight-two. I'm sorry.
Sorry, eight-two.
Eight-two. Okay, so it's basically shows the detail of the open space, the roof deck, which is the roof of the parking deck. The materials, the board that's, any other questions? There's another board there.
That'd be eight-three.
The board eight-three, basically, that's the area elevation of the building. Basically, what we're indicating here is that the building materials, the color of the front of the building will change. It'll be between brick, limestone, hardened wood. And the intent is for the developer is to have this kind of finish wrapped all sides of the building because all sides of this building are visible. So those roofs just have the front and then, you know, we drop all the quality materials as we go to the back. This wall will continue around the building because to the widest hand place, to the left, you've got the transit parking lot, and then you've got the school there, on the other side, the tracks, the transversal line. So all sides of this building will be finished.
And if you could briefly, given your post-up, compare this project with previous approval?
Previous project had three parking levels, two parking levels below grade, one at grade. And then there was seven residential floors above that. This, we've increased the footprint of the parking, so we have the two parking levels, but actually, we provide more cars because we've increased the footprint of the building. And then we've brought the height of the building down also because now, before the building was covered by a tank of shade, going the length of the parking. This is also a residential building on Pennsylvania Avenue, but then we had two wings, a cutback, making it a horseshoe. So that's how we get in, more units per floor, and create a horseshoe in four quarters.
And then this now has additional, any of the results from home?
Yes, see, the developer thought since we're actually right near the train station, adjacent to this, the space of the building on the left side is the parking lot for the New Jersey Transit train station. So it's on that side of the building, that grade, under the building, building's a retail compliant. So it's on Martha's car, it's where, of course, the road or something, we could get on the train, that entity is there.
And obviously, this building will be honor, EBA, compliant?
Correct, the building will be all construction codes, they're going to be quality materials. It'll be a good question to say.
And, you know, we have a plan here to address the variances associated with the application, but if you could briefly provide, I don't know what to do with those variants.
Right under sheet G zero zero zero, which is the first of page four, door number. We have the left corner of the zone, we're going to show. Basically, the first point is these variants, this is a C four zone. C four zone is, it allows many different types of uses, it allows office usage, it allows amusement, it has light manufacturing, and even allows some towels. So why would this specifically allow residential, it allows, it does allow for many intense uses.
And I know we have our plan here, your experience with this type of use in the C four zone, and is proximity to the train station?
Well, I think it fits well in this, in this up here because it is near the train station. So we can attract people that want to use the mass transit system, supposed to drive. You have a portal here, you can totally come down to a lower level, and it only took me to the train into the city, or going down to South Jersey, without touching a car. And with gas line to our, that's obviously with, with gas line to our gashing ration right now, that becomes an advantage. The other variants is basically have to do with a series of yard spaces. For Pennsylvania Avenue, they were down to forty-four, thirty-five feet, a little bit less than twelve feet. The rear yard, setback, sixty feet, where a hundred, the section of depth of the parking. There's a left yard variance, we're proposing five feet, it's a right side, we're proposing five feet. Then there's the, it's an open space areas, which we talked, there's a height variance, the maximum height in C four zone is five stories, sixty feet, where six stories and seventy-eight feet.
But that's much less than?
It's substantially less than the previous approval. Previous approval would have been nine stories, that should have began from Pennsylvania Avenue. And then hand place, again, there's seven yard spaces, front yard, and the right and left yard. Essentially, there is a, which is similar to the other, we do cover both around that.
And is, again, have our plan, is also testified that this, where this grid by the back is bound two streets and is right?
Yeah, it's bound, it's called a par, it's bound by two streets. And then, it's almost like a third street, having the tracks in the back of the building. So it actually, there's a lot of open space behind the building, because of the, because of the tracks, and all of the, my ways, and left of that.
Thank you. And you've had an opportunity to review the initial park consultant letter October the fifth, and the updated letter November the fifth.
Yes.
On applying to any of those current additions.
We can come to that with all of your answers.
Thank you. I would like to rest this time.
Vice Chairman, come.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have any more detail on landscape, if you're proposing? Yeah, we, we. Mr. Quinn, you talked about the landscape on the perimeter. We did not provide a schedule, so we will provide a planning schedule, the types of plants. Okay, obviously, this will be very different because they're potted plants. But they'll be, they'll be, well, in between the public space on the roof deck, and the apartments on this level is a buffer, and create a landscape and a wall. So that, I'll, I'll give a planning schedule to Mr. Colorado, exactly all the species and numbers that will go on this level.
Do you, roughly, do you have any ideas on these street trees you're going to be providing?
How many street trees will you provide?
Street trees? Do you have any idea what you have? Is that something?
Actually, I think Mr. Quinn testified to that, there was some hand place on Pennsylvania Avenue.
We showed three new shade trees, shade trees.
We show three new shade trees on hand place. The shade trees, you already have shade trees placed at thirty, thirty feet along Pennsylvania Avenue, we showed those to remain. So the only shade trees we show are on hand place, the plants that are from the building, Pennsylvania Avenue, and those are all small, little dimensions, because they're closer to the building.
So you're talking about significant shade trees here, not talking about little dimensions on hand place?
No, 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 we have three or four shade trees, such as apples, along hand place. There's space in about thirty feet on center, because that seems to be the situation on Pennsylvania Avenue. And in between those, we have about three dog ones that are placed in between the shade trees.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Clark, one other question for you. You made mention before about the finish on the front, on the entire property?
Yes.
You made reference to the finish on the, on the exterior?
Yes.
Are we saying, assuming this is basically what it's going to look like, this type of color, this type of finish?
Color, the colors might change as soon as the owner, the material's potential, they'll be mixing brick, limestone, then hardened wood, which is a cement wood.
The reason I'm asking that, we're going to be more specific on this, we're from now on, we have an application, which was on a more evident, and we didn't ask about the color, and it's a future color, they colored it, so we're in the process of getting that corrected. So you're going to stay with neutral colors, and plus, there's a surrounding area, and they were?
Exactly, I won't, I won't do anything, you just got to put some shade on.
Just want to make sure it goes on the record, because if that happens again, with some of the other applications, we have something to go back to, and say, we told us we'd keep it neutral, and now it's armed, it's written, or it's colored that, because I'm on a more evident.
We'll, we'll keep it neutral colors.
Thank you. Commissions, quick call.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question to Mr. Colorado. Six years ago, this, this application was in front of the board. Today, they're in front of the board again, what's the difference between the two uses? Or is there any difference between a condominium, building versus a rental?
Well, the ordinance applies to the type of ownership, to the rentals or condominium. So it's only, it's residential use, and that's only what it speaks to. So there really isn't any difference with respect to the approval, as whether it's condominium, or whether it's residential rentals. The residential uses aren't permitted in the C four zone, was used by us previously, and also we have to make it, then the application. The retail component that they're adding wasn't a usual application, or that use is permitted in the C four zone, so they don't need a use warranty for that use. So as far as use goes, residential is still not permitted, the use warranty was granted previously. The fact that it's coming from condo to apartment really isn't relevant, this ordinance doesn't speak to that, to the ownership.
Thank you.
Commissions, any other questions?
I, I do have a question, actually. The rooftop deck you're talking about, you said that it sits on top of the deck, on top of the roof of the last part of the deck.
Correct.
Now, I'm assuming that the rest of the building rises up around this, and, and what residential floor will this sit?
It says, it says the first residential floor.
Okay, so the people on the first residential floor will have direct access to this?
Correct, they will actually create a landscape above in front of those apartments, all the deck, or exactly that, yes.
Last, very quick question, on sheet number G zero two zero. Here's an access door, the stairwell A, out onto the side of hand place. Will that stairwell allow people that need a phone to come downstairs, or maybe pull in, whatever the case may be? And will they be able to access the walkway that goes out on the, is it?
Yeah, that's, if someone were to come down or reach the parking lot, they could actually go out the front of the building, walk around the block, or they could go off at the elevator level, which, the elevator goes through the whole garage. And they could walk out that exit, for example, go up some steps, and they'd be all in place.
Okay, so, so although, I believe I see, but there are stairs?
We're going to take it, hand place accessible, yes.
Okay, that's it. Anyone else?
Next, I would like to honor traffic impact here, Matthew Welch.
Page right there, page two solemn, swear the testimony, you're making the true ownership of the property? Is, and then add this to the record?
That's Matthew Welch, E L C H, seventeen, Dr. John Drive, this town.
Mr. Welch, I don't believe, and he did say that, he did testify before this board, but he did give the board some of your credentials, your educational background, the reason you hold, and he testified before the board, so we'd expect that has an impression.
Certainly, I have a bachelor of science in the field of civil engineering from Princeton Polytechnic Institute, licensed professional. Bachelor of science in the field of civil engineering from Princeton Polytechnic Institute, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, prepared over a hundred traffic impact studies, provided expert traffic testing, move for planning zones towards the rest of the state.
That's a good move for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we know that the traffic impact study was submitted, and park consultant has applied on it. If you could briefly provide your, your overview of the study.
Certainly, we did prepare an internal traffic impact analysis date October first, two thousand and twelve, which included evaluation of the existing conditions, forecasting future traffic problems, passing houses to the adjacent roadways, as well as a review of available park supply. Specifically, in an evaluation of the existing conditions, we did traffic turnoff accounts during the midday morning peak hours. This was done during the year when schools were still in session. Specifically, we did counts of on-site frontage at the intersection of Pennsylvania Avenue and North Avenue, as well as intersection of Pennsylvania Avenue and Hand Place. Following those counts, we then projected those existing problems, which we call our no build condition. We use a conservative two percent annual background growth rate in accordance with the NJ DOT criteria. Following that, we ran an integrity projections for this use, using standard published average rates. Specifically, we use the ISK rates for apartments, for the hundred units proposed, as well as the specialty retail rates for the retail component projects. Based on those average rates, those use would be expected to generate approximately fifty-one trips during the midday morning peak hour, approximately sixty-seven trips during the midday evening peak hour. In terms of what that represents, as far as impacts, generally, we'll have a hundred trips as industrial floor development would be expected to have any impact on the adjacent roadway. Following our trip generation projections, we then handled traffic to our no build condition, to validate our build condition traffic columns, and then ran the passing houses for both the no build and build conditions, capacity analysis. Based on our analysis, the residential capacity on the adjacent roadway network to accommodate this use, the adjacent intersections are pretty unacceptable overall, low service, either in both peak hour study and both no build and build conditions. So I just would not expect any significant impact to the adjacent roadway network. Regarding the closed parking supply, we are providing fifty-five, one hundred and fifty-five onsite parking stalls. Additionally, six stalls are available on the street. Your testimony from the architect, that previous use, provide a hundred and twenty-one onsite parking stalls who are increasingly under the previous use. The adjacent trans offices in the area, particularly the adjacent train, train station, as well as several bus lines, do provide alternative modes of transportation for residents to commute to work. So we would expect a lower parking demand in that other similar uses elsewhere. Additionally, we did look up the published average rates for apartments, based on what we anticipate to see in urban areas. Published average rates for apartment uses, to determine, you know, with other studies, what we would expect to see. The average published rate is about one point two spaces per unit. We're providing parts one, one point five five spaces per unit, so above the industry's standard average, and would be sufficient to support parking demands.
Thank you. I have no further questions, and Mr. Welch.
Commissions, any questions?
Thank you. And now I would like to call our professional planner, Catherine Gregory.
Yes, I do. Catherine Gregory, business address ninety-six, I'm sorry, Catherine K. H. R. Y. M., Gregory, G. R. E. G. O. O. Y. Business address ninety-six, Linwood Plaza, number three fifty, in Fort Lauderdale.
And that's Catherine without an N?
K. H. R. Y. M.
It's Gregory, do you have any? Please provide the board with your work educational background, when you testified before this sort of board, and introduce that profession, your professional planning.
Yes, I'm a professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and have been so since the year of two thousand. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a master's in architecture, and I'm a planner in University of Illinois. I testified before hundreds of words throughout the state of New Jersey, or something.
Thank you. Now, if you've heard the testimony so far, seeing that obviously I have an opportunity to give a site application, and if you could provide before your, your findings with respect to this project, what's being sorted?
Yes, to begin, I do have a brief photo exhibit that I'd hand out to the board, this is my copy. And I guess we need to mark this as exhibit eight-four. While it's getting handed out for the record, it's an eight and a half by eleven photo exhibit, it comes prepared by itself. The photographs, and we're not taking them ourselves, they're all aerial photography, which we're taking from flywaps.com. The title is Existing Conditions and Surrounding Neighboring Characteristics, seven fifteen dash seven thirty-three, Pennsylvania Avenue, eleven fifty-one dash eleven sixty-five, Hand Place, Elizabeth, New Jersey. Sorry? Okay, thank you. And while I know that this particular property was a subject of previous application in two thousand and five, I'm not quite sure how many board members were involved in that application. And Elizabeth is quite a large city, so I took the opportunity of utilizing aerial photography to show the board our particular site and the surrounding area. What you'll see is, on the top of the first three photographs, is an aerial, a three-D aerial photograph of our subject site, which is indicated by a yellow arrow. What you'll see, obviously, is, we have the New Jersey Transit railroad line, a part of the property. We also have the school that's located across from our property. To the north, there you'll see the stock and shop property. And you'll also see wealth of residential that is located in the area, albeit our block on property is some C four. What you'll see is that the area does seem to have a great predominance of residential uses, and also the school, as well as a few retail uses, obviously, to the north, some retail uses to the north. The second photograph is a different view of our property from Pennsylvania Avenue. It's a little bit of a closer up view of the existing buildings that are located on the property. And as you can see, the property is, some of them reutilized by those two commercial buildings, being in only one story, and providing quite a bit of surface parking. And then, the third photograph is the same view, but pulled up again to see the surrounding uses, so you can get a better idea of the development that was in the area, and the size and scale of the surrounding buildings. We're here tonight for a series of variances, the first of which would be the use variances, since residential, excuse me, since residential is not permitted use in the C four zone. Now, the board did find that this property wasn't particularly suited for a use variance back in two thousand and five. However, to reiterate some of the reasons, one of the questions made, particularly suited to the site, of the site, particularly as regard to the train station that's located adjacent to the property. When we talk about the state's plans for smart growth, and for transfer village development, this site could not be more well-suited to those types of principles. So therefore, the site is really more particularly suited to residential than to commercial, particularly in this location. We also, we always talk about the D six variance, which is the height variance. What is interesting, that in two thousand and five, which we had discussed before, is that this building was actually approved for a hundred and thirteen feet, seven inches, and now is being closed at seventy-eight feet, one inch, which is a fairly significant change. We're talking about it from nine stories to six stories. So therefore, all that was found to not have an impact in two thousand and five. It's, it's obviously going to have less of an impact in two thousand and twelve. We know that the surrounding area, we have, we have two streets, and we have a New Jersey Transit railroad lines. So therefore, the height of this building will not impact any adequate light area of space on any adjacent properties, particularly in this location, not only because of the surrounding uses, but because of the streets. We have two parking lots that are located to the north, and because we have streets and a New Jersey Transit railroad line, it will not impact negatively the height of this building. The next set of variances would actually be the setback variances. And the actual setbacks that are committed in the zone, for the C four zone, are really more into a commercial building rather than a residential building. So therefore, the setbacks are also warranted, and probably for the same reasons that I stated earlier, with regard to how, where this is located, and what's surrounding it, based on the streets, based on the parking, based on the New Jersey Transit railroad. We're taking advantage of less setbacks, but more open space in the middle of the building by having that terrace, or, you know, on the, on the top, excuse me, of the parking lot. And again, not adversely having an impact on the adequate light area of open space. The last variant that we need is for the open space. We had a little over nine thousand square feet, I think the number was nine thousand forty-nine square feet. Yes, nine thousand forty-nine square feet, where twenty thousand eight hundred eighty-one square feet is required. We have a couple of things here, I think, number one, we are trying to meet the intent of the ordinance, providing a terrace space for the enjoyment of presence of the building. Number two, we also have accessibility to Kellol Park, which if you do take a look at the top photograph and photos that you see to the right-hand corner, that's where Kellol Park is located. It's a very close proximity to the subject property, so therefore, we think that that balances out the lack of open space that we may have at the building. And because of the large number of one and two bedroom units, we feel that there are probably less children in this building. So therefore, as much of the space- So therefore, as much open space may not be warranted, but it is balanced out by Calhoun Park. With regard to the positive criteria, with regard to the variances, I think we promote several purposes of municipal land use law. Number one would be purpose A, or promotion of the general welfare. And while I say that, it has been found in the case of infuse versus theory, that motion of a state policy yes, was found, I'm sorry, promotion of state policy was found to promote general welfare. And that's where I come back to the transit village initiative and the smart growth policies. Right now, the site has a billion ways for that transit village initiative and also into the smart growth policies based on this location next to the train station. We also, I believe, promote purpose C, which talks about providing I'm sorry, purpose C, purpose C, adequate length, air, and open space. We also promote purpose I, which is promotion of a desirable vision of life. We're obviously taking two commercial buildings that are somewhat outdated and providing a new, second, pleasing residential building in its place. We also provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including residential and recreation uses, which is purpose G. And I think Oh, also, I'm sorry. The last question would be purpose E, which talks about appropriate population densities. We provide hundred units in 2005, setting it to have more grade again for a hundred units. So we're providing the same kind of density at this location. And then in terms of the negative criteria, we hope to prove two things. That there's no substantial detriment to public good and a substantial impairment to the intended purpose of zoning ordinance. I don't think there's any substantial detriment to public good. This building was approved in 2005 at a taller height, and now we are proposing it at a smaller height. So therefore, I don't think that there's any substantial detriment to the public good. And in terms of the zone and zoning ordinance, we actually have to reconcile the omission of the residential use from the zone. My understanding is that while I've amended over time, Elizabeth's ordinance has not truly been updated since 1977. It hasn't really necessarily caught up with some of the state's policies in terms of transit villages and the like. However, the master plan does address it. And if I can quote a new 2005 master plan on page 16 of circulation element, it was found that the master plan was promoting transit village opportunities. And it did say, it is recommended that cities explore the potential of being designated the transit, I'm sorry, the city explore the potential of being designated a transit village. So therefore, the master plan did indeed address this particular type of development. So therefore, I think that we can reconcile the omission of the use from the zone. So with that said, I do believe that we promote both positive and the negative criteria for the granting of the Q1 use variance, the D6 height variance, and the other whole variances that we requested this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gregory. I have no further questions.
Commissioners. Any question?
We have no further witnesses, but obviously, we call upon this jury to do further questions in the morning. Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I maybe I missed a few of the last in the argument, but which apartments were handicapped compliant?
Basically, what the code says is that when you do it with the elevator, you go in. All they need is after the handicaps adaptable. So the handicap person could actually rent any one of these apartments. So all the items will be designed so they can handle the handicaps. All the items will be designed so that they're adaptable. There was still a handicap bathroom. The kitchen counter could be modified so that
Same car races or bathroom.
Correct, all the lockings.
Any other question? Seeing none. Are there any members of the audience who can testify regarding this application itself, that all of the time is stated in? Seeing none. Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I remember this application in 2005. I was, I have to say that I was very disappointed that the developer we approved this application for back in 2005 in pursuit. I cannot remember the building that was said that was proposed. This is definitely a much better building. I don't see any, anything that could be detrimental in this application. I think it's great that this developer is taking over this project, is modifying it to make it look even much better than the one that we approved back in 2005. And I'm certainly in favor of this application. For, I just have a question, and probably Mr. Hammond may not be able to answer. This is a quite big project. Why is necessary for us to submit an approval for preliminary and final purposes?
Why?
That's how this application was presented.
Yes, because what we did is in the, we took, when we weren't heard last month, we took the opportunity to address all the further comments of Harvard consultants.
So those comments have been addressed.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I don't like my colleague was not on the board in 2005. And probably a good thing, because I don't think I would have voted for that project in 2005. I, just from what I'm hearing tonight, the height of the law will scare me. But this application, I feel is a good application. There's a development that's needed in that area. It's close to the training. I think people will utilize that. It's close to a school, a stop and shop, a shopping center. It seems to be ideal for that spot. So I too am in favor of this application.
Commissioners, what comments?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to repeat what my colleagues have just said, but ideally, it is a good application for that location.
Commissioners.
Yeah, I think I'll follow up with Commissioner Haba's statement. I think this area has all the ingredients for this type of, of this type of building. Again, school, stop and shop, next to a train station that I think is very underutilized at this point because of the lack of density in that area. I think the building would definitely bring some welcome passengers to definitely utilize that means the transportation in that area. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this application.
Motion by Commissioner Castro, who I have a second. Second by Commissioner Silva, Madam Secretary.
Vice Chairman.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Silva.
Aye.
Reverend Dixon.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go with this project.
Love to see this.